On the meeting to order, Clark Smith, can you please take the roll?
Mayor Proton Will Coxon.
Present.
Mayor Brown.
Present.
House Member Sweet.
Present.
House Member Tucson.
Present.
House Member Dee Simmons.
Here.
House Member Jay Simmons.
Present.
House Member King.
Present.
Seven members present, we have quorum.
All right, please rise as you're able for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the following: one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion for agenda approval. So move.
Support.
So move and supported, any changes or updates? Seeing none on favor of the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, good evening, everyone, this is our first opportunity for public comment. You'll have three minutes to address council, please step up to the podium when your name is called on the sheet, and then we'll start there, if there are others in the audience who did not sign up, then I'll move to the audience and then to Zoom. One second, thank you. We have Sherrell Cole, Chevelle Cole, oh yeah, please come forward, do you want to speak? Good evening.
So I just wanted to speak on the homelessness crisis that's going on in Ipsy. I know a lot of people, I'm from here, I stay in Salina, but I am from Ipsy. I have a lot of friends and family here and a lot of people that I know are homeless right now. They stand from pillow to post, house to house. The shelters in Ann Arbor are full, are always full, so they will send them to Detroit. Those shelters are always full, so they have nowhere to go. I want to put a shelter here in Ipsy for women and children and maybe at-risk teens because I know those are the people who really need the housing at this time. And I know teens that are homeless, that don't have family, women who have children who are homeless and single women also who they don't have any help, they're homeless. So Ipsy does not have a homeless shelter and I think one is needed. So that's what I want to say.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Great, that is all I had signed up on the list here, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address council? Anyone on Zoom?
If you're on Zoom and you'd like to speak, please press the raise hand button.
No hands, all right, I'm gonna, one more time, anybody in the audience who has a brain desire to talk to council? Seeing none, then we, we will close public comment, thank you. Um, let's see, all right, we will move on to our first, well, our only presentation here from Amy Sell for our city manager search. Oh, hello. Hi. Hi, good evening.
Good evening, nice to be here, my name's Barbie, so I'm speaking on behalf of Amy Sell. And I think I spoke with a few of you on the phone, so thank you, thank you for your time. First, let's just start, if you have any questions, if you want me to walk through timeline assessment, it's probably the best way to start.
Yes, please.
Okay, sure. If you look at the criteria based on all the feedback we gathered from the community survey, which you had a great participation in, we received a lot of information from that, and then via intake calls that I spoke to a few people on the phone, we compiled basically all of the pertinent information, common themes. And so on the rubric, you'll see criteria for municipal knowledge and experience, must haves, ideal, and then how we'll assess that. So there's communication skills and style, leadership skills and style, project management skills, personal qualities, financial acumen and community and economic development. Based on the rubric qualities is, we came up with survey questions, video questions, phone interviews, and you'll see to the far right on that table, how we'll, how we'll assess those via survey, different qualities. Does anyone have any questions or comment on that? Wow, you guys are an easy group. So let's go through timeline because this is really customized, customizable, and this is just based on if everything goes well tonight and you approve the job posting and everything looks good, then we'll go ahead and get the posting up and ready tomorrow. We like to have it open for a good four weeks. So looking at the timeline, if we open this tomorrow, this will be open through November the 19th. So it's about four weeks and a few days. We would then have a week, week and a half to gather all of our candidate information, just get all the video interviews, questions, anything outstanding, get those in. We will then present that to you, we'll send a tracker with links to all the candidate information, so you'll have, you'll have time to review that on your own before we talk about it in closed session in a council meeting. So we're looking at council to review candidates on December the 5th. And then conducting first round interviews, possibly Thursday and Friday. It could just be one day depending on how many finalists we choose. Again, this is all sort of temporary and can be accommodated to fit your schedule, just the wants and needs of the community or of the city. So ideally, you could have by the end of December, by the end of the year, you could have an offer to, to send out and negotiations could begin then. So how does the timeline look as far as like meetings and?
Yeah.
With the holidays?
I'm looking at the calendar now again, because I, so I have, I have a question about when the candidates are sent to council, like you said, each one will have their own link. Are those redacted, do we, are they just gonna be the, the folks like information resumes, are we gonna know names and pictures or like how does that work?
Yeah, good question, we create, basically it's just a giant sort of tracking sheet. Yeah, and we choose, usually there's seven to eight top candidates that we feel would fit the criteria that you're looking for, and that's who we would present. That number could fluctuate depending on the volume of resumes that we received. We just did a community where we presented 10 applicants. So we like to say average, it's seven to eight people. So on that tracking sheet, you'll have their name, you'll have a link to their resume, you'll have a link to their survey answers, you'll have a link to the video interview, you'll have a link to our typed up notes like from the phone interviews. We also do background checks and reference checks and you'll have information, you'll have all that too. Yeah, so they're just like hyperlinks that you can link to and it takes you right to it.
Nice.
We try to make it as easy as possible, we try to do all the hard work for you.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
Are there questions or any comments about the timeline, Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Just quick, it says here the selection team, I just was wondering who that's made up of and?
Basically yourselves.
So, okay, so wherever it says selection team or council, we should just guess it's the full group?
Yeah, selection team, yeah, it's usually, you know, the council members only.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Great, thank you.
Any other questions, the dates look okay, is this enough time?
And I will say that as far as time, like this is really sort of our standard timeline and it seems to work well. Sometimes around the holidays and end of the year, you know, it could fluctuate. But we're flexible as long as it fits, you know, nothing's written in stone right here, so you can always change this when the posting closes. We do like to give, you know, applicants, when we get to that final sort of week and we're submitting them to you, we do like to have them save the date just so they can have it in their calendars if they're chosen to interview.
And then there, there are opportunities for a second interview if you wanted that or?
If you want that, absolutely. I would say 99% of the time, the majority, one interview is all that's needed. Just based on all the information that you will, you'll have at your fingertips from the interviews and the video interviews and your in-person interviews, you'll usually have enough information. Yeah.
Thank you. Mayor Proton?
What's the form of the feedback for, to council? Here's on Saturday, December 16th, that is your notes, recorded information, how does that process?
Yeah, so first round interviews, interviews, you know, tentatively on the 14th and 15th, we'll have feedback forms, so you'll have feedback forms for each individual applicant that's interviewing. We'll gather all of that at the end and then we'll compile the data to see who, you know, the majority, you know, top two, top three, top four, however many decide, and then we will send that information to you and then you can choose how many people you want to bring into interview or how many?
To deliver it?
To deliver, yeah, thank you.
Is there gonna be the same kind of feedback form for the review in closed session or are we just kind of talking about it and picking who?
Yeah, so for closed session, some people will request confidentiality, so we'll assign numbers to, to applicants' names or resumes and then we'll basically just take a vote, like all those that are in favor of applicant number one, raise your hand. And we'll take, you know, if you choose to interview three people, we'll take the top highest three, four. So again, depending on the volume of applicants and finalists that we get, we'll determine really probably how many you want to bring in for an interview.
And I guess that was gonna be my next question, it might seem redundant, but if we, if we got seven really great candidates and we wanted to interview all seven, we would do that.
I mean, you can, you can absolutely do that.
But you recommend three or fours?
Recommend picking like your top, you know, four, sometimes five. Each, each city and community is different, I'm really here just to help collaborate and bring you the best talent. So if everyone is like, I absolutely, I want to interview all seven, go ahead, we'll make it happen.
Oh, Councilmember Simmons, Dee Simmons?
Yeah, so just for the, for the interviews, will those be kind of public interviews and then will the public be able to weigh in, do you have a process for them to give feedback on?
Yeah, great question, so interviews are open to the public and we will, we can, so we, prior to this meeting, we did a community survey, so we can also do a community survey, so to say, to gather feedback on what they think too. Yep, and then we could, would compile that data with your feedback and provide that information to you.
Yeah, I think that would be great.
Yeah.
And then we, so in a previous search, not for city manager, but in our police chief search, we had a community meet and greet. Is that something that you all would be, like, could do, like if, let's say we had two candidates that really stood out, we wanted to bring them in to meet with the community, would that be?
Absolutely.
We could add in here?
Yeah, and I think it may be in the proposal, but we, I mean, we've done so many different, we've done like speed dating, speed interviewing, we've done meet and greets. So really, we, you know, you can tailor this to what you want as, as a group.
Kind of as we get closer and we have the, the top candidates, we could decide like, hey, we want to do a meet and greet.
I mean, if you, if you think that's what you want to do, we can, you know, make a mental note of that and we can start planning for that. We like to plan, we like to have our na, our dates nailed down, so if we're doing save the date for interviews, maybe save the date for community meet and greet, we can just get on top of it and start planning for that too. But you could email, you know, you could let me know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other comments, questions from council? Oh, Barbie, thank you so much, I don't know, it can keep going.
Yeah, one more thing, so the, the job description, I just want to make sure in your packet after the rubric and the assessment plan, there's the job posting, yeah, it begins with about the community, about the community, about the opportunity, yeah. So I don't know if anyone had the chance to read through there, if you had anything you wanted to add, change, suggest, like, that would be a fabulous time. And this is more, not necessarily like a job description, but it's marketing job, yeah, to help entice people.
Councilmember Simmons, did you raise your hand, Dee Simmons?
Yes, the one thing I had for this, and maybe I'm trying to think of where best it shows up, but maybe under competencies, I think maybe might have been where I was thinking about this, but just something in terms of thinking about the role of relationship building with the general community and you know, public meetings and things of that sort. I don't know, I, I just think it'll be good for that to be pulled out somewhere, but I'll let you decide where best.
Yeah, no, that's actually a great point because that is something that came up, we, we heard as a theme was, you know, with the relationship building with different departments, just being out in the public. But yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can add, go ahead.
Oh, me? I had a couple of things just in the, within the job description, under the key responsibilities where it talks about appoints and removes all department heads. My understanding, those positions are hired and merit-based or they actually appointed?
They're hired, right?
Are you talking about department heads?
Yeah.
Those are all hired by the city manager?
Okay. Should we change the language in there then to, instead of saying appointed, so hires and supervises instead of appoints and removes? Does that make more sense based on the role and the scope?
I mean, I guess I read it that way because I know, I know that's what they.
Yeah, yeah, but.
You know, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't bother me either way if we want to change it. Yeah, no, changing from hearing sounds, it's clear, right? Okay. Hiring and removes? So like, our HR.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So if we could change appoints to hires?
Okay.
And removes all department heads and employees of the city?
Well, maybe we just say.
Hires and supervises?
Hires and managers.
Hires and manages, okay. Hires and manages all department heads and employees of the city, is everybody okay with that? Okay. And you said you had some other things?
In regards to the on the second page where it talks about labor relations, experience with contract negotiations?
Yep. All right, before education requirements?
Yeah. Would it make sense for us to be more specific there to talk about examples of unions that they would be working with? Or is that like cover generic enough that people are gonna understand? Yeah.
HR.
I know, well, I think my take, I mean, I think, right, it could be helpful, but then also we don't want people to not apply if they think like, oh, unless I have experience with these unions, you know, they probably are gonna be interested, so I'd say less is more.
Leave it.
It's like you want enough stuff in there to have the right people apply, but then not too broad, the balancing act.
And they'll have.
Right, we, like.
Change unions before too, like, so change unions and?
Yeah. Great point, because we do, we do word it to be, to attract like the biggest pool of candidates and then as we assess down, we can get more information from them. We could add something to the question or survey question, like if you want to know more detail about that, we can add that in maybe during the assessment process.
Who have they? Contract negotiations with and?
Yeah, or tell us more, you know, describe your experience with this.
That'd be a great question, I think, Ed.
Okay.
Mayor Proton?
Dee Simmons, who's?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Dee Simmons. Another addition, so under financial acumen, so I, I think it would be great to add, so it says strong budgeting skills and I would say ethical standards.
I support that language.
I was gonna say fiscal responsibility.
Oh.
And please.
So again, I mean, but we also, I mean, they don't necessarily need to be an expert in budgeting, right, that's why we have a finance manager and the whole finance department, so. I'm curious about what your take is on, again, I'm trying to be.
Oh, she added an ethical standards, not like.
Oh, no, I like that.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry, never mind, I thought we were adding, sorry.
Oh, no, I don't think we were saying like expert budget skills.
No, no, yeah, this is more of a consideration.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay, so for under financial acumen, strong business, or strong budgeting skills and ethical standards?
Yes.
Or comma ethical standard.
Oh, yeah, yeah. More things? House Member Sweet?
Is there any elaboration needed where it references Water Street Development? Or is that a research there we want people to do on their own to see what that is, or should we just put a generic like placeholder to say that? Like some more generic language in there instead of that?
Where's, where is that, I'm sorry?
Um, the key issues.
Oh, yeah, supporting access for the Water Street Development?
Yeah.
That is the hottest ticket in town, I would think that they would do some research in history on that. I wouldn't go too far, I, I think, but.
I do have just one other thing, the, in the about the community, that first paragraph, I mean, it mentions some festivals that we haven't had in several years. So I'm wondering about having some, it sounds nitpicky, but, you know, something more current, like we have, I love the Elvis Fest, but we haven't had that for a couple of years, and also Shadow Art Fair has been gone for quite some time, I love that one too, but.
Okay.
So, but there's some others, I mean.
DIY.
Yeah, DIY Ipsy, yeah, so, just a little bit more pressure, things that are current with what we're doing.
Maybe Totally, Totally Awesome Fest. Summer Fest. Yeah, Summer Fest, Joe Dooley Day.
Bones.
Okay, so remove Michigan Elvis Fest and Shadow Art Fair and replace that with DIY Ypsilanti, totally.
Total, yeah, Totally Awesome Fest.
Totally Awesome Fest, thank you, I can't even read my own scribble, and then Summer Fest?
Parker's Summer Fest, is it, is it Joe Dooley Day, Parker's? Yeah.
Holy bones.
We don't need a whole comprehensive.
No, no, we want, we want Repair Fest.
Every festival.
With a, with a.
Yeah.
Overrated picture on the back.
You know, and you read it the first time, you're like, oh, this looks great, and it does look great. Any additional thoughts, or Barbie, are there more things that you have to share with us?
But no, I really just wanted to be here to answer any questions you might have, go through the process, make sure you understood it. Let you know that you can, you know, reach me, I think all of you have my emails, I can always resend that, reach me at any time if you do have questions. And I'm here to make this as easy as possible. So no question is too small. But I will, I can make these changes and then should I, do you want me to send them to you for approval?
Yeah.
So I'll get your approval from our changes before we post it.
Okay.
Okay, so look for that tomorrow.
Okay, I will, I will, I will.
Great.
All right, any final thoughts or burning things? Well, thank you so much, Barbie.
No, thank you, we're super excited to help with this search, I mean, we're, we work out of Spark East, so it's, you know, Ipsy's our home and.
We love this.
Yeah, we have many EMU graduates, including myself, so this will be a fun search.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Okay, we will move into our first ordinance reading and Councilmember King, you have that?
Result, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that the ordinance entitled Removing the Open Meetings Act requirements from the Ypsilanti Police Advisory Commission be adopted on first reading. That's a move.
They moved? And support, oh, any support, you did support it, thank you. Okay, discussion, because I know we talked about this, or is there any additional presentation or conversation about removing the OMA? All right, then, oh, I was gonna open the public hearing, but.
No, go for it.
Cool, all right, so I'm gonna open the public hearing, so this is an opportunity for anyone in the audience or with us on Zoom to give comment about the removal of the OMA, Open Meetings Act for the Ypsilanti Police Advisory Commission, so please raise your hand and I will call on you. Oh, hi, please come. No, sir, sorry, you have to be on the mic so we can record it.
Aaron?
This is Mr. Humes, hello. Hi, Herman Humes, retired Ipsy teacher, I'm part of the Whiteback Ypsilanti Police Advisory Commission, and my question is, I, I just heard this was, was happening and I was just wondering why no one, as far as I know, on the committee, had any kind of notification that this was, was happening? And then just how does that, I guess there's two questions, there are, there are two questions. So, you know, why didn't we get, you know, any prior notification, one? And two, how does that impact the effectiveness of the committee going forward, meaning, you know, two people can get together and make a decision about something and then that's, it happens or it doesn't happen? As, as things are set up now, we look for a quorum, we have discussions, we have debates, we have arguments, we have input, we speak to the community, and then we try to come up with some project, if you will, or some activity, or some sort of a suggestion as to how things can be improved between the Ypsilanti Police Department and the community. And so I'm just wondering how this is going to affect us in our effectiveness, that's all I want to ask.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hopefully in discussion, we'll answer your question.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address council on this issue? Is there anyone on Zoom?
You're on Zoom and you'd like to speak on this issue, please press the raise hand button.
No, all right, thank you, Councilmember King, you can close the public hearing.
Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that the public hearing to consider the ordinance entitled Removing the Open Meetings Act requirements from the Ypsilanti Police Advisory Commission be officially closed, that's a move.
Support, it's been moved and supported, all in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, discussion time, Mayor Proton, I know your hand was up first.
I have the same questions that Herman had, you know, if there's no, I mean, I don't, I don't recall the discussion about this for the other other commissions in terms of, at the time, I, I raised the question of regarding minutes and how people would be instructed to keep minutes and whether there is a document that would be circulated for that and people trained for keeping minutes, but also, you know, the, the question of posting is, I mean, my understanding is that the Open Meetings Act is the, the document that that sets the guidelines for how meetings will be noticed and, you know, public information for those meetings, and so absent of that, then what's in place to, to have that structure for not only taking minutes but noticing the meetings and, and determining, you know, where the meetings are gonna be held? That's a, that's a concern of mine, and I don't see without this, that, that there's any place in place for this or for other commission.
And I guess I, it could very well be me have drawing a blank, but I didn't, we didn't remove the OMA from the other commissions, did we?
This, the OMA has been removed from Parks and Arts and then last week, OMA was removed from other commissions. This is the only commission that had it in its ordinance, so this is why staff brought it.
Okay, okay, so it's already been done on the other commissions except for this one. Correct, got it, thank you. House Member Dee Simmons?
Yeah, so as we've discussed this each time, the way that it's been shared is that this requirement does not remove expectations around noticing in notes with public or any of those things, so. Yeah, so it doesn't, it hasn't changed any of those expectations. Yeah, so it doesn't, it hasn't changed any of those expectations.
Where are those expectations explicitly written so that we have something to go back to? So if two people decide they're gonna have a meeting and they don't even tell the other people, and they do that and they put a resolution to this, to the, to the council, how do we regulate how many people have seen that and whether that was done, uh, in an equitable way?
So is there supposed to be, was this next step, I feel like this is kind of that we were gonna add language back to, to explicitly say some of those things outside of the OMA? Because I believe in the last meeting, we did have a conversation about like, we can go back and add particular language to the ordinance, I thought, or is that incorrect? Mr. Burr, yes, please.
The Open Meetings Act only applies to uh, but, public bodies that can take action. And in the Ypsilanti City Charter, it provides that all boards and commissions of the city, except if the state mandated, are only advisory. And so what that means is all the, all a commission can do is advise council and any action has to be taken by council. Uh, this should not change anything in the way that the present committees operate, but it will affect some of the staff responsibilities, uh, for re-supporting the commissions, make it a little easier for the staff to support the commission. And, uh, this is probably a surprise, but I wonder if the city manager could help us with that, please.
So it is, it's still our intent to provide everything that was covered under open, the Open Meetings Act except for the need to basically, um, have quorum, that was one of the things, but we can establish a, a number of people that we want to be there to make decisions. This also gives the, the bodies the ability to meet virtually. We would still notice, they would still approve a schedule. They could meet once in person quarterly and then the rest online, just to provide more ease for the commission, but this is e- e- essentially just to assist with flexibility of the commission and flexibility with staff. And it's not trying to remove the, the, uh, public nature of the bodies. And if council wants, we can draft up a list of rules that every board must follow and then we can bring those forward.
I feel like I thought that's the direction we were going in, was a universal set of expectations for all of the, the boards and commissions. I could be wrong.
And we, we can most definitely bring that forward.
Cool.
And it can include the things that kind of have been removed here that we want to make sure are happening.
Correct. The only thing that's actually been removed is the Open Meetings Act from this. It's a, it's already been removed from every other advisory body. This is the only one that still includes that, that aspect of the Open Meetings Act. So on second reading, we can bring that along with the, uh, with this, uh, final approval.
Got it.
Cool.
Thank you. Further discussion or questions from council? On this? All right, well, seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Council member Tucson?
Yes.
Council member Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Council member Jay Simmons?
Come back to me, please.
Council member King?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilcoxson?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Council member Sweet?
Yes.
Council member Jay Simmons?
Yes.
Seven yeses, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Council member Dee Simmons, you have our consent agenda.
Hmm, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti that the following items be approved. Uh, approving the minutes of October third, twenty twenty-three, city council meeting, and approving the updated voting agreement. And I say move.
Or.
Moved and supported. Oh, all in favor of the consent agenda that's presented?
Aye.
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 Is it, is it a roll call? Oh, my apologies. Clerk, can you call the roll?
Council member Jay Simmons?
Yes, I have no idea.
Council member King?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilcoxson?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Council member Sweet?
Yes.
Council member Tucson?
Yes.
Council member Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Seven yeses, the motion carries.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, you have our first resolution.
Hmm.
Uh, Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, but for the two tabled resolutions, we need a motion to untable it first, right?
Correct. You'd have to untable the item and then, uh, put the item back on the table.
Can someone move to, um, untable? Can you, can you say what you're untabling? Thank you.
Um. I would like to move to untable the Troy Street right-of-way vacation, um, ordinance.
Resolution.
Resolution, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Ah.
Oh, can he, can he untable both at the same time?
You gotta take one motion.
All right, so just do that one.
So moved.
All right, any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Council member King?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilcoxson?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Council member Sweet?
Yes.
Council member Tucson?
Yes.
Council member Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Council member Jay Simmons?
Yes.
Seven yeses, the motion carries.
All right, now Mayor Protem.
You want to untable the other one or?
Oh, you just want to do them both at the same time? Want to do it again? Okay, yeah.
Go back there.
I move to untable resolution number two zero two three dash one nine three, uh, which is, um, resolution to approve an updated property disposition policy.
So this would be untabled, now you can discuss it.
Oh, great, okay.
That's what I thought.
All right.
To do, yeah, no, it's okay. Mayor Protem, you can.
Yeah. Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one nine zero. Uh, that has been on table, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas the City of Ypsilanti recognizes Troy Street Services a single-family residential area, and whereas the City of Ypsilanti recognizes that this action creates no undue burden to traffic, and whereas the City of Ypsilanti recognizes that vacating Troy Street is necessary to prevent traffic from traveling through the neighborhood to destinations outside the neighborhood or other safety factors such as speed of traffic, frequency of use, and the size and condition of the street or alley. And whereas this resolution to vacate Troy Street adheres to Article Three Development Procedures and Administration, Division Two Permits Subdivision Threes Temporary Use as Permits, Section one twenty-two dash three three five Requirements, and whereas the City of Ypsilanti recognizes the wishes and desires of the majority of the neighborhood are met by vacating Troy Street, now therefore be it resolved that an ordinance entitled the Troy Street Right-of-Way Vacation be adopted on first reading, and I say move.
Support.
Move and supported. All right, now we can discuss it. So this was tabled, um, because folks had questions, um. I don't know who would like to start this discussion. Mr. Burr, please do.
Uh, somewhat carefully, and if you'll bear with me for just a little bit of explanation. I live in the city, I live on a city lot in a city subdivision. So what does that mean? Well, when a developer wants to build houses on a subdivision, they take a large parcel of land and they subdivide it into different smaller parcels. And there's a state statute, it's now called this Land Division Act, that, that regulates how that's done. What happens is the developer hires a surveyor or a civil engineer, sometimes an architect, goes out on the land, takes the land, physically puts stakes in the land to designate what's happening there, and then prepares a drawing. These are big drawings. And that drawing has to come to the city, it sets out the lots and the streets and the easements and so on. That drawing then comes to the city council, goes to the county, goes to different governmental agencies. And to be approved, they all have to sign off on it and you have seals and so on. In this particular case, beside, be, be, for city council tonight, we're talking about green subdivision. Green subdivision is a particular area in the city which is, is a contiguous, uh, compact area of land. And that subdivision then, in a big, uh, parcel of paper, is, is a drawing, that goes to the city, goes to all these people, then it goes to the Register of Deeds Office. And that's, uh, drawing describes the streets that are gonna be in the subdivision. And how big they are, how wide they are, where they go and so on. When it comes to city council, if the city council approves that subdivision drawing and the plan, then city council accepts the dr- the streets that are put in the plan. That plan then goes to the city, to the County Register of Deeds Office, and when it's recorded, then that is the plat, and so there's now a legal uh, definition, a legal place for the particular lots, so anyone can go out and find them on the face of the earth. So Erin, if you would, uh, put on the, uh, screen, please, that's it. Now, this is a, no, go back to the first one. This is a, this is the plat for a green subdivision that we're talking about. You can see on the right-hand side there, there's a street. And then there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten lots. That's green subdivision, all right? Why is this significant? Because the, the, um, motion before the council is to vacate that street, Troy Street. And Troy Street in that subdivision only fronts on about six lots. Okay? Now, what is the problem? The Land Division Act provides what happens if you vacate a street in a subdivision. And the normal situation when you vacate a street is you divide it down the middle and half goes to each side. However, this, the Land Division Act says titled to a street or alley, the full width of is, is vacated by a court judgment shall vest in the rightful proprietors of the lots within the subdivision covered by the plat. So it doesn't go outside of the plat at all. Now, um, go ahead, Erin, if you give me another view. All right, here's a view that shows, go, go to the next one. All right, here's, stop there. This is a view that shows green subdivision, but it's the other bunch of other subdivisions, several other subdivisions that abut to it. But the, the lots that abut to green subdivision don't get any part of Troy Street when it's vacated. Okay, everybody clear on that?
Hmm.
The people that are, that are moving to have this street vacated are not in the subdivision. And so they, if the street is vacated, all of it will go to the one owner in the subdivision. And I don't think, the reason I'm bringing this up is I don't think that was the intention. All right? I would, do I have any questions?
Do. So we, we have the, the numbers, um, on the alley vacation, the map that we got during the application. Do you know like which of these parcels would be the person who is actually the only one in the subdivision, like?
Yes, I do.
Parcel.
Seven thirteen and seven oh three.
Seven oh three?
Seven thirteen and seven oh three, I think they're the same person.
Oh, so they're.
Benefit from that vacation.
Yep, okay. So seven oh three and seven thirteen. No, it's fine, because I, we have this picture too, uh, so it's just those. Yes.
The one owner or this.
Uh, in that lot. So they would all get that, okay, so, nice too, okay.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I wasn't clear on that, so I had to look. Uh, you have, you're done with Mr. Mr. Burr finished? You, you all done? Okay, council members, Dee Simmons, I see your hand, sorry.
Oh, yeah, this isn't necessarily a question for you. It might be, because all questions might be for you, Mr. Burr.
Okay.
Um, so I understand what you just, um, described. I kind of came to that during our last meeting. Um, a question I have, and since we have received more information about the decades-long focus on this, um, and, and so so a couple of questions I have is, one, up until this point, there has been documented lack of follow-through from these property owners of even doing what the city had been asking them to do. Is that? Does that seem clear?
Yeah.
From, like, looking back to like two thousand, what, four or whatever? With two thousand and three, um, you know, uh, many people were not even alive that are in this room, so, okay. So, one is they haven't been following through to this point. And so my question is, uh, what is it that we would need to do to compel them to do so? Because they're continually creating a nuisance for, yeah.
That is a question. Thank you for the question. And this is an interesting situation because this street has been a, a matter of controversy for a number of years. I've been out there a number of times looking at different problems and so on. So the fact is that the one owner in the subdivision that would get the street if you vacated has filed a lawsuit against the city. That law is spent, is pending, although we haven't, I haven't received legal service, that is, they haven't handed me the document, and I'm gonna ask council if, I intend to just allow service, I'll accept it without making them bring a process server to me, so the case will be at issue in the circuit court. And then my thought is, once that case is in the court, we'll try to get all the parties together and work out something that the court can order that we can enforce. That's, that's my plan. Whether it will work or not is another issue, but I think that would be a way. This is a situation, there's no good answer, but if we can get a court order on the, the, uh, situation, then I think we will be in a good position.
So the other question I have is, again, up until this point, they have not done what they've been told. Have they been assessed fines, fees? What would that look like? For if they don't follow through with what they're supposed to do, which is to move literally their truck and their fence off of that space.
I'm not sure of all of the facts, it's whose fence and who's done what and so on, that'll come out if we go to court. But if we have a court order, then the court can enforce it.
So the city can't enforce that.
So we haven't, until this point, been able to enforce the fact that they've been in the right-of-way?
Not familiar with all of the, all of the enforcement action that's been taken by the building department, but I know that whatever it is, the problem continues. I'd like to have a court hammer to see if I can't solve it.
Hmm, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Burr?
Who? When the planning commission sent this to council, they were under the impression that, you know, the, by vacating this, that the court would then decide. But it sounds like the court is bound by that Land Division Act to do exactly what you've described.
Well, the court does decide, but the court has to rule in accordance with statutes, with the law.
Right.
Yes.
So, so that ruling, if we vacate this, then the court would be compelled to rule that the owner of seven thirteen would receive all of that, and the, the people who put the, um, petition forward, um, would not have any standing in that case at all.
That's correct, and I think that maybe one of their parcels would be landlocked because of it.
Right. Um, getting to council member Simmons' point, um, in our blight, um, and in our snow removal ordinances, there is, uh, uh, there are clauses in there that the city will do those things and then charge whoever had the violation, uh, for those services. So is it possible that with this, we could go out as a city and have a truck remove that fence? And tow away the vehicles that are in the right-of-way and then charge that person?
Yes.
For those services?
I don't understand why they haven't done.
There, there's several different aspects to that question. We have in the city on occasion, if someone blocks an alley, the city has taken, it's called self-help, we've gone out and removed it.
Hmm.
And, uh, I'm not, I can't tell you for sure whether we've charged that back, I suppose we could. With the case of an automobile, there are certain statutes in regard to automobiles in how you, and how you remove them.
Okay. And so the violations that have been racked up over the years, um, by this property owner, um, would still be violations, even if they, if, if, if we vacated this and they owned it, the things that are in those would still be violations of the zoning act.
Well, that's a.
Parking, parking commercial vehicles, doing, doing repairs on commercial vehicles in residential area and those kinds of things.
That would be something you'd have to look at, yes.
We still have to deal with that, so.
Right.
That wouldn't even solve the problem, if that person had all of that property and they were still doing those things, we would still have to go out and enforce those anyway.
Well, it would change the equation because if it's a public right-of-way, that's, that's pretty clear that you can't. Well, it would change the equation, because if it's a public right-of-way, that's, that's pretty clear that you can't block that right-of-way. If it's a private property, then you get into different issues. But yes, you're right, the zoning ordinances and the building ordinances would still apply, yes.
So I guess I just want to be clear, if we do not vacate, what happens? Will we be able to enforce then?
Well, you can enforce whether you vacate or not, whatever the law provides. My suggestion is, if you don't vacate, there's a lawsuit pending. And I would try to make use of that as a vehicle for solving the problem or as much as can. There's nothing guaranteed, you know, there's a lot of things that can happen in a court action, but that would be my initial thought.
So Mr. Barra, is it your advice then that we vacate?
I was going the other way.
Yeah, I was saying
I kind of got that sense.
I think vacation would not be in the interest of the parties that asked for it.
And then I'm wondering, what are the perks if we vacate? What are the perks to the city?
I'm sorry, what?
I know.
There's no perk.
I just wanted to be clear.
Oh, yeah, there's no perk. Mayor Proton.
The outstanding question is, there's lot seven oh six that was, does that predate the, uh, the green subdivision? Because how was that lot supposed to be accessed before that subdivision was made and that road was put there?
I don't have the, I don't have the answer, I'm sorry.
Okay, so getting back to my objections with this the first time is like, there's two large pieces of land back there that are only accessible by this right-of-way.
I think the part, the land, the large piece of land at the end of the cul-de-sac, on, on the north of the cul-de-sac, I think fronts on
Oh, the street.
Another street.
Right, but those two properties, seven oh three and seven oh six,
If you vacate it, I think they may very well be landlocked.
And so seven oh six, which is owned by the folks that live in the township, would have to have, would have to negotiate an easement to access from that side.
I haven't looked into that, but that's probably true, yes.
So, which would leave this same problem that they already have, is that they're not getting
Yeah, yeah. It would be easier probably for them to just have it access accessible through the township, which does the city no good.
And I still hold that, you know, that's undeveloped space in a city that is desperate for land to put houses on. And looking at the size of the plots next to that, it's certainly reasonable thing. So the statement that this will never be developed is, is not something that I think is accurate or desirable.
Also, Rudy Simmons.
Um, so I guess my question is, I want to make a motion, but do we make a motion to adjust? So I would just to amend this to say do not vacate, or is that something separate?
Well, what, what, the proper procedure is normally to have an affirmative action denied. So if you don't want to vacate, you just vote no.
Okay.
Correct, bless you.
Now, in regard to one other thing I'd like to mention before I sit down, I have a lawsuit there on my desk. And attorney Tobias Lipsky from the office will be handling that for the city as far as the real estate matter goes. I think you've met Mr. Lipsky before. Alright, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barra, helpful. Uh, but further discussion from council about this? Are we ready to vote? Alright, well, clerk Smith, please call the roll.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen.
No.
Mayor Brown?
No.
Councilmember Sweet?
No.
Councilmember Tucson?
No.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
No.
Councilmember Jay Simmons?
No.
Councilmember King?
No.
Seven noes, the motion does not carry.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sweet, you have our next, well, wait, can someone untable it?
I move to untable resolution number two zero two three dash one nine three, approving an updated property disposition policy for city-owned property. And I so moved.
The move is supported, clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jay Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Seven yeses, the motion is on table.
Thank you, councilmember Sweet.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one nine three, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the city of Ypsilanti has an interest in selling vacant properties and increasing the number of taxable properties within the city. Whereas the city has a current property disposition policy to sell vacant residential and commercial properties. And whereas the policy needed to be updated to be effectively implemented, where there are multiple interested parties in a residential property and the internal committee reviewing interest in commercial properties to reflect staff properly. Whereas the policy also needed to be updated to effectively be implemented for staff to make up the internal committee to review interest in commercial properties. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Ypsilanti approved the updated property disposition policy of city-owned properties. And I so move forward.
Move and supported. Hello.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening, so we've given preference to city of Ypsilanti residents. We've given preference to first-time home by homeowners. And we've removed if from the section D and made it clear that the property must be developed. Um, we also discussed last time that, that, um, there's a timeframe, it's one year, and then it reverts back to the city. So that's in there as well.
Okay. So any additional comments, questions for Katie, concerns about this updated, uh, policy? Thank you for making those changes for us. Um, I'll give it a little, one more second. Alright, seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jay Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
abstain.
Uh, Mayor Proton Wilcoxen?
Yes.
And councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Six yeses, the motion carries.
Thank you, councilmember Jay Simmons, you have our next resolution.
Resolution number two zero two three dash two zero two, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the city of Ypsilanti recognizes the importance of an overnight warming shelter during the cold harsh winter months in Michigan and seeks to assist our most vulnerable. And whereas the city operates the Ypsilanti Freight House and generates revenue to help support the ongoing maintenance and community purpose for the space. And whereas the investment in a warming center at the freight house is part of a broader strategy to prioritize community health collaboration with community partners like the Shelter Association of Washtenaw County and Ypsilanti Downtown Development Authority. And whereas St. Luke's Episcopal Church has offered to host an overnight warming shelter at one twenty North Huron Street, and the Shelter Association of Washtenaw County will provide an operational support as detailed in the following memorandum of understanding. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approved the memorandum of understanding with the Shelter Association of Washtenaw County and the City of Ypsilanti and St. Luke's Episcopal Church to jointly operate an overnight warming shelter at one twenty North Huron, beginning in November twenty twenty-three and ending by March twenty twenty-four. And authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign on behalf of the city, subject to city attorney approval, and I so move forward.
And move and supported, hello again, Katie.
Hello. Yep.
Alright, oh, sorry.
That's right. Questions? We have Dan Kelly from the Shelter Association also for questions regarding specifics for the operations.
Questions, comments from council, has, not much has changed since last year. Okay, alright.
Only need goes up and we really appreciate the partnership and it goes a long way to meeting the increasing community need.
Thank you so much for partnering with us to do this.
We are still looking for, we have three days, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So if you guys have suggestions or ideas of a church or another location overnight, we are. We had one that we thought might come through and it hasn't, so.
Yeah, we're reaching out to more and our goal is to have ideally the entire winter, especially to address the increasing need, because we saw last year a nineteen percent increase in overnight need. Uh, and then also daytime needs higher than ever too, seeing more evictions across the county too. And more people finding themselves homeless, more encampments. Our goal is to have ideally, we want to have in Ypsilanti daytime and overnight the entire winter, overnight, seven nights a week. That way, anybody who's experiencing homelessness doesn't have to come all the way to Ann Arbor and get help with the heat.
Yeah. That's on Rudy Simmons.
Um, one question I have is, so I know last year it took a while for this to come online. And so is that to be expected again?
No. Uh, last year we were trying to build the plane in the air, I think this year we've already started hiring, in fact, we just did twelve, uh, twelve new team members for winter, uh, just yesterday for an orientation. We're rapidly hiring to go onboard as soon as, uh, what do we say, the thirteenth, I think is what we said. That'd be the soonest, but, um, if there's any delays, we communicate that as soon as possible, but that's our expectation, starting the thirteenth.
Okay, thank you.
I think this went before council in December of last year.
Right, we started late, yeah.
We were way ahead of schedule from, from that.
Yeah, last year we had to hire, we had to go to temporary staffing services. And at one point, I think I was three for thirty-two on interviews. So it was really, really hard, I mean, it's a challenging role, our team works incredibly hard, it's very hard to work in, uh, it's just a challenging work, it's really, really emotionally draining, so want to find people who are really, like, passionate and passionate about the work.
Absolutely.
That's why we started hiring on early September.
Alright, any other comments, questions from council? I am so happy that we're on track to start on time this year. Uh, seeing none, clerk Smith, when they're ready?
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jay Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Seven yeses, the motion carries.
Thank you, councilmember Tucson, you have our next resolution.
I do, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash two oh three, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the city of Ypsilanti recognizes the importance of a warming center during the cold harsh winter months in Michigan and seeks to assist our most vulnerable. And whereas the city operates the Ypsilanti Freight House and generates revenue to help support the ongoing maintenance and community purpose of the space. And whereas the investment in a warming center at the freight house is a part of a broader strategy to prioritize community health collaboration with community partners like the Shelter Association of Washtenaw County and Ypsilanti Downtown Development Authority. And now therefore be it resolved that Ypsilanti City Council approved the memorandum of understanding with the Shelter Association of Washtenaw County to support the warming center operation beginning in November twenty twenty-three and ending in twenty twenty-four, subject to city attorney approval, and I so move.
It's been moved and supported, hello again. Questions, comments from council? Or any updates on the daytime? I mean, I guess it's all the same, eh?
I think the big note that was, that was different, as I was writing this one up, is just that, um, a lot of, I think the biggest thing that was different was that originally when this was passed, was that the daytime, the transport was going to happen, happen from daytime to the center. And so there was transportation happening from Ypsilanti to Ann Arbor. Obviously now it'll happen from Ypsilanti to the Ypsilanti overnight, right? And so there's not transportation happening from Ypsilanti to Ann Arbor, except obviously when they're overnight in Ypsilanti. And so that, that was a misconception that happened a lot. And so it was one of the things that Dan and I talked about initially, because I think that that misconception is, is a common one. And I think that that's an important one that we continue to dispel as we, um, as we continue to make sure that there's shelter options in it.
Thank you. Councilmember Dee Simmons?
And this is just like for clarity, because I remember, I feel like I remember this discussion in terms of thinking about transportation. But, um, for St. Luke's, that's still for men only, so there's still not like an option for women?
Yeah, I mean, we're still, we actually have a meeting with St. Luke's on Friday to talk about it. I mean, they're opening up a different room in the building, so I'm wondering, the conversation is going to be whether or not we can have co-ed. Um, because we do have, we, we have strong staffing levels there.
So you said what?
Strong staffing levels there for both second and third shift. Um, so I think that's a goal, if not, that wouldn't be the case, we'd still have to do some limited transport. But, um, I think ideally we would have a co-ed environment, we've got the staffing for it. Uh, but obviously we have to talk with the congregation to see if they're okay with that. They're very supportive though, I know last year we also talked about, there was some, uh, discussion about whether or not we can do drop-in. Um, and this year they feel more comfortable with that and like Katie said, people that are at the freight house can go directly over or come in in the evening is, is the plan.
Yeah, that would be great, I mean, because I think that we're seeing an increase, um, in women, um, unfortunately. And I think that's what we saw too at Growing Hope, so, um, yeah, I think it would be great if we would have possibility.
Additional comments or questions from council? Being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jay Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Seven yeses, the motion carries.
Thank you so much for all of your work, um, glad we're again in motion, so thank you very much. Thank you. Alright, uh, councilmember King, you have our next resolution.
Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the council of the city of Ypsilanti deems it to be in the best interest of the city to continue to keep healthcare costs in line with our budget. And whereas the current Blue Cross Blue Shield and Blue Care Network plans will continue to keep healthcare costs in line with our budget, while still offering additional benefits to the active employees and retirees that are eligible to, um, participate. Now therefore be resolved that the council of the city of Ypsilanti approved one-year contract from January first, twenty twenty-four to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, to offer the following Blue Cross Blue Shield and Blue Care Network benefit plans to all eligible participating employees and retirees. Community Blue PPO, Simply Blue PPO, three thousand, BCN, HMO, HSA, and Medicare Advantage. Further that the city of, further, further that the council of the city of Ypsilanti approves a one-year contract with EHIM to administer the self-funded RAP and prescription portions of the BCBS Community Blue PPO program and coordinate all benefits and costs with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan, I so move.
Moving supported, good evening, Mrs. Frye.
Well, before our questions, I have our broker from VTC, Michelle Bolster, if you do have questions.
Thank you, questions, uh, from council? Just giving folks that. Yes, looks good, alright. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jay Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Seven yeses, the motion carries.
Thank you, councilmember Dee Simmons, you have our next resolution.
The, whereas the city council of the city of Ypsilanti deems it necessary to comply with the State of Michigan two thousand eleven Public Act one fifty-two as amended. And whereas the act contains three options for complying with the requirements of the act as follows. One, hard cap option limits employers' total annual healthcare cost for employees based on coverage levels. Number two, eighty percent by twenty percent option limits employers' share of total healthcare costs to not more than eighty percent, requires annual majority vote. And number three, opt-out option, the city may exempt itself from the requirements of the act by an annual two-thirds vote. And whereas the city council has decided to adopt the opt-out option as its choice of compliance under the act, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Ypsilanti elects to comply with two thousand eleven Public Act one fifty-two by approving and adopting the opt-out option for the medical benefit plan coverage year of, uh, January first, twenty twenty-four, twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And I so move.
Or, moved and supported, hello again. Hello again. Questions from council? Mayor Proton?
It's not really a question, I mean, it's like, seems like ever since I've been on council, we've always opted out because it was the, the uh, most cost-effective for both the city budget and, um, for employees' budget. I'm not surprised that this was, again, the case.
Indeed. Uh, comments or questions? Alright, seeing none, clerk, please call the roll, thank you.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jay Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Seven yeses, the motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Proton, you have our next resolution.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash two oh six, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, and now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approved planning services proposal from Giffords Webster, subject to the approval
And now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council will approve planning services proposal from Giffords Webster, subject to the approval of the city attorney, and I so move.
Been moved and supported. Right, Andy, and hello, good evening.
Hey, good evening, council. Mayor Brown, thank you for having me tonight. Um I'm Andy Amot, for those that don't know. Um I'm really thrilled to be here again with you all and uh talking about planning again. Um really pumped for this opportunity. So um really, we're trying to provide you with the day-to-day, regular, everyday services. That city planner um conducts um during this temporary time. Um we, you know, we're here to take calls, correspond with residents, correspond with developers. Um you know, help uh police in the department sign off on those permits um that are, you know, part of the everyday process. With the building department. Um we're here to help with all of that. Um we're also here to help with, you know, reviews when need be. Um site plans, special use permits. Um uh here to also just help try to implement the master plan. And any of those uh kinds of recommendations you're looking to uh get after as a city. Um when the time permits, obviously, but we're just looking to try to provide those everyday planning services first. Um and just help the team, you know, be afloat uh to the best that they can be. Um we, I just wanna go over for the record, we do have a typo in the drafted agreement on page one oh four of the council packet. Uh we, our intention is twenty hours a week. Um there's a twenty-four in there somewhere. Um so uh what we're looking to do is provide two days of uh in-office services. Of eight-hour shifts and then be there on call for any of those Zoom meetings or calls or any other kinds of. Pop-up uh emergencies that we need to um help with for four other hours uh throughout the week. So um I'm also here with Julia Upall, another senior planner with our company. So um it's probably going to be the two of us splitting time uh in office, just because uh we like to have. Two people on any given project, just from familiarity purposes. Um uh and uh that being said, I would just. Julie, if you wanna introduce yourself real quick and um we'll go from there.
Hi, I'm I'm Julia. Um I'm a senior planner at Giffords Webster. I've also been there just a little bit longer than Andy. We started right around the same time. Um but I also have a pa- background in public sector planning, and I've been a planner for about eight years. In economic development and a variety of different roles, um and excited to be here with you guys, Nipsey.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
And we're just happy to answer any questions. Um Julie and I both at currently work in other municipalities. Doing the same role, covering during a time of transition, providing day-to-day planning services. Um I've been in Sterling Heights for about a year doing that. Um that contract is kind of prolonged longer than we thought. Um but we um we're used to doing this kind of work. Um and I'm especially pumped to do it here because I actually know. The ordinance and I know the plans even before uh before jumping into it, so really excited.
Thanks, Andy. Um any questions for Mr. Amat? Oh, councilmember Dee Simmons?
I don't know if these are actually for you. This is mainly a clarification question, just because I'm trying to wrap my head around this. So I'm wanna, I'm trying to figure out how this overlays with the contract we have with um Carlisle Wartman.
So we have a contract with Carlisle Wartman similar to this, but it's it's an on-call basis. So we would have to redo that contract anyway if we decided to stick with Car- Carlisle Wartman, since our uh city planner is uh leaving at the end of this month. Um I contacted Mr. Amat um once I found that out, as he does have a familiarity with our our zoning code. Um and uh planning commission, Z B A, but most importantly, that that department had, has gone through a lot since April. And I thought that having a familiar face in the office could do a lot for the morale. Um this is not necessarily anything against Carlisle Wartman. Both firms provide excellent services. I think this is just, the transition will be easier on the community and on staff.
And so there would be work that would be transitioning from the Kyle Wartman group to now um.
The only thing really that Carlisle Wartman has done is uh the the uh audit of the department, which they will still complete. Um and they've done a little bit of work with um uh our uh marijuana zoning. So we'll we'll get that finished and then that contract, it will be terminated based off section five of that contract. And then we'll we'll be with uh Giffords Webster. Their contract's a little bit more um flexible. And that they they had their monthly retainer. There's no month limit on how long we use them. So my plan currently is hopefully we'll have a city planner in place within the next two months. And then we'll we'll decrease uh their operation time to the sixteen hours, which will drop the the cost of the city. And then eventually just move forward with just our city planner.
And is there any overlap? Like, was there a timeframe that we needed to cancel with Kyle Wartman, or is it?
That contract can be terminated at any time with or without notice, but I did contract contact Carlisle Wartman to know that this change was coming. Just for a uh professional courtesy, and so they are aware of this.
Great, thank you.
Further questions from council? Mayor Potem?
Um going back to the Carlisle Wartman, hi Andy. Uh Carlisle Wartman, um I didn't get a chance to do this side-by-side. To see what the costs were similar uh in terms of the, I know there was a one-year requirement for their um retainer. Contract, but is this on par with the cost?
This, the Carlisle Wartman contract is the exact retainer cost for the first year. But once we got into uh twenty uh twenty-four, that would have increased. So this, this is more flexible in that it stays at this rate and we don't have to be locked in for an entire year.
But the month-to-month rate is.
Yes, it's 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 the exact same thing as the first, the first year.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Are there further questions?
Oh.
Oh, yeah, Mayor Potem?
Just a clarification. This was a confusing thing with the Carlisle Wartman too, but if you're gonna show up at planning commission meetings. That is billed on top of the retainer, right?
Yeah, so that would be an hourly cost um based on our hourly uh rate, which is in the fee schedule there. And that with a minimum of uh three hundred fifty dollars, I believe our note was. So I believe there's times where we can be flexible if we have a lower retainer. Because there wasn't work that week, there wasn't that extra three hours used that we could potentially, you know, encapsulate that. Planning commission time within that amount, um you know, the twenty-hour amount if it's not used. Um but that's just, anything on top of that twenty hours would be the hourly.
And that's also similar to the Carlisle Wartman contract, that anything outside of that retainer, they would bill us.
Further questions? I'm happy that you'll be around.
I'm happy too.
All right, it's very nice to see a familiar face. Um okay, well, there are no further questions, and clerk Smith, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jay Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Seven yeses, the motion carries.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much. Yes, us too. Nice to meet you as well. Councilmember Sweet, you have our last resolution.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash two oh seven, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. Whereas the city of Ypsilanti has an interest in applying for grant funds to develop affordable housing for residents. And whereas it is of the city's best interest to develop partnerships across Washtenaw County. And whereas the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development has developed a grant that benefits those partnerships. Uh therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Ypsilanti approve partnering with the city of Ann Arbor to apply. For the pathways to removing obstacles to housing grant through the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development, and I so move.
Been moved and supported. Welcome back.
Thank you. So about a week ago, I got a call from the city of Ann Arbor, and they are applying for a HUD grant. For affordable housing, and they are looking to partner with the city of Ypsilanti and apply with us as a partner. So they have grant writers that are going to apply for this this grant. And it is an opportunity for us to partner with them and look at our zoning ordinances. And make sure that they are friendly for affordable housing and to look at um missile mi- mi- miss it. Missing middle housing um by pre- preapproving it um building plans for ADUs, duplexes, triplexes, townhomes. Um pattern home books, which is all things that we've been looking at doing with our planning department, have not had the opportunity to do. It would provide funds for that. It would also um provide funds for homeownership opportunities by creating down payment assistance programs. And also provide technical assistance for home buyer education programs as well as. Um provide funding for community engagement on Water Street, which is something that we're already looking at doing as well. And so it, these are all the uh different programs that it would support for planning purposes. Um and so those are a few of the programs. Um we were brainstorming a little bit more today on the on the phone, other programs that it could do. Um one of the things I was hoping to figure out is a way that we could work partner with landlords to come up with a program to help. Get them um ways to rehab and do rehabilitation for rental units and things like that, so to bring more of those on online. Um I don't know that, I don't know that I can, I can weasel that in, but I'm trying to figure out a way. Um so those are some of the opportunities. Uh again, they wanna partner with us. I think it's a really good opportunity for us to partner with the city of Ann Arbor. So um it's one of those things that Holly had talked with them at a at a conference about. And then um I'm bringing it to you because Holly does not have the capacity, as she's trying to wrap a bunch of things up, so here I am.
It's totally fun. All right, well, thank you for bringing this to us. And thank you to Holly for spearheading this originally. Are there questions um from council or Katie? On this partnership? Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes, um I'm wondering, just in terms of the scope possibilities. When it says kind of removing barriers um around housing. Whether that um includes looking at residential zoning overall.
Yep, it will.
Okay.
Yep, that's one of the things that essentially, like one of the biggest projects that we will undertake is, you know. Do like a overhaul of looking at zoning.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
Further questions? What I will say is that I love when there's opportunities for us to collaborate um with our neighbors and show that we are working on things together. Um so I am happy about this, and hopefully we will get awarded some part of this.
That was the part that excited me the most, like, yes.
Working together.
Yes, 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 yes.
Uh councilmember Dee Simmons?
Oh, this is just, um do we have a sense of the amount of what we would get if rewarded?
So I think that the total amount that we're looking at um applying for within like between both communities is five, probably five million. And I think that um I don't don't have an amount exactly for the city of Ypsilanti yet, just because we haven't punched all of the numbers. Probably five hundred to five hundred thousand to a million in there, but I don't have a exact amount.
Do we have?
But we are in full support of the city of Ann Arbor building lots more affordable housing. That is a very good thing.
All right, are there comments?
I'm assuming this is.
Essentially, that's the narrative. I mean, like that, that we were discussing that a lot on the call today is like, is that that's the narrative. We uh we've seen, we've seen a decline in the city of Ypsilanti has continued to become more and more unafford- unaffordable. And that that's been the problem, and is it, the city becomes more unaffordable, or is Ann Arbor become becomes more unaffordable. Is city of Ypsilanti is the choice, and so again, that that's just, that that been the dichotomy. So how do we continue to make Ann Arbor an affordable option as well?
And it says like the maximum order amount could be ten million, so you know, I'm looking at that now, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, okay.
No, it's just I had a conversation a few weeks ago with Jennifer Hall, who is in charge of the Affordable Housing for Ann Arbor. And it was, it was a great conversation, and so being able to collaborate with her is great. Um you know, I've had some other dealings with her as well, so. I look forward to this.
All right, if there's no further discussion, thank you so much, Katie. Um clerk Smith, please call the roll.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jay Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Seven yeses, the motion carries.
Crossing our fingers now that we.
I know, right?
Yes, yes, awesome. All right, we are on to um liaison reports. Police Advisory Commission.
Y P A will be meeting here at City Hall at seven P M next Thursday, the twenty-sixth. That is all.
All right, H R C.
So I do need clarity. As far as I know, we are meeting on October the twenty-fifth here at seven P M. But when I looked on the schedule online, it looked like someone else was meeting, so I just wanna get clarity. We are still meeting on October the twenty-fifth?
Oh, it's the twenty-fourth.
Oh. No, that's a different meeting. I'm I'm sorry.
That's what we're talking about for H R C currently.
Sorry.
Okay, so you said it's supposed to be the twenty-fifth, and there's another meeting scheduled here. I'm sorry, I'm trying to get to it. I don't see the calendar.
Um yes, it does look like the planning commission uh meets that night.
I guess that's me.
Yeah, I was looking at the schedule the other night. But it's our first meeting.
Right, but yeah, for the first meeting, that's up to.
I mean, I think we definitely need to meet so we can discuss some things, me and you, but I don't know if we should meet virtually for the first night. I don't know. Okay.
Okay, um so H R C may be meeting on October the twenty-fifth, but I'm unsure. Maybe is there a way to like maybe poll the group to see what? As to not cancel it, I would try to meet or.
Or could we change the location? Okay.
Okay. All right, well, let us know. Thank you. Uh Parks and Arts Commission.
Um at their meeting last night, um they had some recommendations for their bylaws, so I'll be sharing those with. Um city clerk to have on the council agenda for review and approval for that group. Um they finalized their last officer election last night, and they're starting to work on their annual report for council.
Thank you. Sustainability?
So this, when the Sustainability Commission last met, um they uh approved a um. A resolu- a B city resolution um for this, basically for the Sustainability Commission to become. The. I don't know, holders, like I'm like, what is it? But but they they will, the the B city stuff will then flow through the Sustainability Commission. Um there also was an update um from Commissioner Brian Foley about the Park Ridge Resilience Hub. And during that conversation, he uh talked about a desire to put video cameras. Um up around Park Ridge Park. Um which, of course, I have questions about, but I'll save those. And then um we also had a presentation from Commissioner um T C Collins around bee health. And uh hives, like how to make make sure that they stay healthy and how to um. Recognize when a hive has been compromised. Uh and then uh there also was a proposal put forward to create a subcommittee. Of the commission that would focus on building out a resilience hub network. Um which would also include a lot of different partnerships um and different work in that area.
Thank you. Uh H D C. Planning Commission.
Hasn't met since uh we're taking this based on the twenty-fifth, so.
Okay, uh Z B A. All right, thank you. Semcog?
Uh nothing to report.
Watts?
Um meeting this month was canceled, but we will have one next month.
Okay, urban county, anything? County, I, I don't think so. Okay, D D A? All right. Warming set of support, holiday stuff for our districts, eight thirty freight house Thursday. Perfect. Thank you. Rutherford Pool.
They did not meet, they, um, there were a number of illnesses and they haven't met.
Thank you. Bicentennial.
Has their Volks March event scheduled for this Saturday?
That's it. All right, thank you. Um, council proposed business. Councilmember Tucson.
Not really much. Nah, nothing. I'm good.
All right, councilmember Jay Simmons. Councilmember Sweet. Mayor Procham Wilcox.
Um, just a couple of things. Been communicating with Director Westler regarding the sinkholes around town. That's been. Those have been assessed and there's no. Uh, underlying problem from Yucca infrastructure. So that makes it a little more streamlined to deal with. Um, and those are going out for bids. And so we've gotten a lot of inquiries about that in Ward Two. Uh, that I know of. And so I want to thank Director Westler for taking care of that and responding to folks about that. We've also been talking with the head of the DDA about a number of things in terms of downtown businesses. That have been closing and, uh, you know, why that is. But. That's been a very fruitful conversation. We've been meeting about every month. Um, and it's, uh, I would encourage other folks to, to have those conversations with Patton. He's a, he's a smart guy and has a wealth of information about the local businesses. So if you're not on the DDA or if you're not. In Ward Three where you wouldn't, you know, be encountered those folks, um, I would encourage you to reach out. So. That's it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Dee Simmons.
Thank you. So just a few things. Um, one, uh, just. There was, I was just trying to follow up. I had. A resident reached out because of a fire safety issue in her apartment building. Where the smoke detector alarms did not go off. And then she found that they did not have batteries in them. Um, and so I've been in touch with our fire department as well as our buildings. Department around this. And I know they were doing an inspection and they had another reinspection. I think it was supposed to be today, yesterday. So I haven't gotten an update yet on that. But just bringing it forward is something that. It's just part of like, yeah, I mean, it's just such a big issue, right? And the landlord put forward. A, um, I saw the, what, what he had sent forward to everyone, which was basically abdicating. Uh, responsibility for fire, the fire alarms, um, by saying that it was the residence responsibility. But that is not true based on the code. That actually landlords are responsible for. Both fire alarms as well as carbon monoxide alarm. And so I'm just noting is something that I think we need to follow up with our building department and making sure that those things. Are being checked because not having batteries. I mean, if I move into an apartment, I probably wouldn't check to see if there's batteries. Cause I would just assume that that was probably already done. And so just wanting to follow up about that, but that also raised a question for me, which I guess this is. Maybe a question actually for our city manager, which is the director of the department. I don't, I don't think that, I think that he's, is he still on leave? Or, and I just, I'm wondering an update because it seems like there's a lot of things that are on hold or kind of waiting and I'm.
Uh, yeah, he is currently on FMLA and which will expire in November. So we have a start date. Sometime mid-November, but. He's only reached out to a building department employee and not to myself nor HR. So we're going to follow up with him and try to get a, an idea when that's going to happen.
Thank you. And then. Hold on, sorry. That was just, that was figured out. Um, another thing is just that, so we've now had a couple of different. Instances, issues with trucks going down Dwyer and kind of that. And knocking down our signs and trees and people have been talking about, oh, oh, did you not know about this? Oh yeah, they knocked down, um, they, they created a electrical short in somebody's house. They drove directly through. One of these big poles, it took the pole right out the ground, knocked over the stop sign and the street sign. I went, I saw it. It was quite impressive that they did all of that and then kept going. Like, didn't it actually stop? And obviously the residents of this street have said like, oh, this happens all the time. They turn down, they see. They see homes and it's all blah, 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 blah. And then they turn to get away from there. And they have speed bumps that they put up on that street, but you know, then, then they're like, well, they look at the speed bumps. That the city put up and they look at the speed bumps on the street and they say, oh, I'd rather go over those speed bumps. And so I know, I think, I know that there was some emails about this, saying that there's signage up already. That is supposed to be telling the trucks not to come down that way. But I'm just trying to figure out what else there is, like whether it's contacting. The different companies or because if this is happening a lot and now this is cost us two signs, you know.
There is actually a trucking, uh, truck route ordinance that was enacted, I think. Twenty eighteen-ish and I think at that time, all of these companies were made aware. Do you know which company it was? Did they have that information? You can email it to me if you want.
Well, I know that from at least the first, the first instance that came forward, I do have the video of the truck that went through. But apparently, and Evan, like, did you have confirmation that they, the driver had gotten a ticket? Cause I, that was a question I had. Because if that's the case, then I would expect that the police department would have gotten that. And I don't know about for the second truck. They might have, cause they do, you know, they might have gotten video of that as well. Um, that one wasn't as destructive as the first one. So I just got alerted about it, um, that it happens. I don't know if it's the same company or not.
Okay, if you could give me the, uh, the information for that company, I can reach out to the police department and see if anything was, was written and then reach out to that company as well.
Okay. Thank you. And then, um, and then I don't know if there's, well, anyway, there might be more things to try to figure out. Cause like, I don't know. Um, and then I wanted to also say, so today. People might know, uh, in my fullness of life that I'm a poet and today is Black Poets Day. And so I'm going to read a poem related to democracy as that's what we're here to practice. So. That's, that'll be my closing. Comment. And so, um, this poem I wrote back. It was in support of fighting voter suppression down in Georgia. So. It's called Each One Counts. We always knew it was about numbers. We've always known your vote isn't only about you. Each one teach one, we're told to remember. Easy to forget when our communities never get what's due. We've always known your vote isn't only about you. You might have heard that we almost gave up. Easy to forget when our communities never get what's due. Many just stopped believing, refusing to take the jump. You might have heard that we almost gave up. Those before were robbed of their dignity, opportunity, voice. Many just stopped believing, refusing to take the jump. Let's not forget, forget what got us here, where we have little choice. Those before were robbed of their dignity, opportunity, voice. Still pushed on believing that democracy could be more just. Let us not forget what got us here, where we have little choice. The barriers kept mounting, leaving us out became a must. Still pushed on believing that democracy could be more just. Yet so many were left out in the name of progress. The barriers kept mounting, leaving us out became a must. Can't be surprised. The system found it easy to rob us of us. Yet so many were left out in the name of progress. Each vote matters and all together, they all matter. Can't be surprised. The system found it easy to rob us of us. All must be counted. No one counts more than another. Each vote matters and all together, they all matter. It found ways to stifle, silence and choke any kind of resistance. All must be counted. No one counts more than another. So we imagine a future where we don't struggle for our existence. It found ways to stifle, silence and choke any kind of resistance. We must grow, adapt and steer back toward democracy. So we imagine a future where we don't struggle for our existence. Planting seeds of justice and hope, we root outright supremacy. We must grow, adapt and steer back toward democracy. Each one teach one, we're told to remember. Planting seeds of justice and hope, we root outright supremacy. We always knew it was about numbers. And with that, I also just want to say, um, just sending thoughts to. Civilians in Palestine and Gaza and, um, in Israel. As they suffer from the violence of. Colonialism, white supremacy and patriarchal greed. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry? I thought you were gonna ask. Okay. All right, thank you. So my communications are. Oh my gosh, councilmember King, I'm sorry. I was moved. My apologies. Okay.
So first, thank you for the beautiful poem. I appreciate it. And I wanted to know if I could have an update about the speed monitor that's going to be put up by Perry School. Just because I still have residents calling me. I see it has moved from Prospect to over by the Old West Middle School. But I guess I'm just wondering, do we have a day or a week when it will move to the Perry School location? Or how are, how is it being prioritized?
All back there. Oh, he's, he's, uh, today.
Is that who operates? The, the, oh.
The police, oh.
DPS.
Director Westler. Speed monitor.
Speed monitor for Perry.
When's it gonna be at Perry School? That was a question.
Do we have a date? Just because I still have, I have residents that are constantly calling and they are wondering. Do we have a schedule of when it moves from place to place? By any chance, it's Perry next? Okay. Okay, that's what I wanted.
Because you asked so nicely.
The other thing I have is our solutionary circle meeting will be at the Freight House on October twenty four from six to eight. And lastly, there is a trunk or treat at Park Ridge Community Center and Park Ridge Park. On Saturday, Septem- uh, not September, but October twenty eighth from three to six PM. That's all.
And my apologies again, I am so sorry.
No problem.
So I have, I have a few things. The first being, um, this past Sunday, I was able to attend and participate. In the Ypsilanti Symphony Orchestra's twenty-fifth anniversary show. I functioned as a narrator to help tell some of the story of Ypsilanti. The entire show was, um, an ode to YPSY. And so we've seen a few different like artistic performances over this year that have been. I'm in celebration of the bicentennial and this was yet another that spoke about, you know, all of the amazing things that have happened in this community over the years. And, um, our bright future. And it was very, very good. Um, it's always really good. The YSO was amazing. Last week I was able to, um, attend a tour of YCUA of Yucca. With, um, our EPA administrator from the Biden administration, Administrator Regan. Around, um, again, clean water and access for our community and infrastructure, um, updates to. Um, equipment over at Yucca and their plans. And so again, I am no expert, so I'm not even going to try to talk about what those things were. But know that, um, it's front of mind, particularly with our Congresswoman Dingell. And the EPA administrator to make sure that communities like ours, who are seeing these kind of once in a hundred year. That's turning into like once in four hundred year storms and issues with, um, water and clean water access. We are, you know, top of the priority list and also doing a lot of amazing work and have been awarded funds from our federal government to continue to support. Our water infrastructure and our public infrastructure. Administrator Regan was very gracious, very kind. And also very impressed with, um, with Luke over at Yucca as well as, um, the collaboration between the city. And the township with our, uh, water utility systems. The MML convention is this week, so all, all of us, I believe, everybody's attending. So hopefully we'll come back with lots of learning. Um, and information to share and things that we can do within this community to help continue moving us forward. There's an upcoming meeting with, um, some county and local leadership with our community businesses. Our business districts next week. And so, um, once those meetings happen, I'm sure we will be sharing, um, what comes out of those conversations. And then lastly, um, on October twenty eighth, there will be. A hoops, is it hoops for hope, hope for hoops? But a charity basketball fundraiser, um, and, uh, supportive breast cancer awareness. At Ypsilanti Middle School from two to six PM as well as a trunk or treat. Outside of the school that afternoon, I believe beginning also at two and going till about six or three, three to six. So, um, it's open to all of the community, of course. Um, so please bring your little ones to the trunk or treat. And if you. Think that you, you know, you've got some skills on the court. I am looking for team members because I am a coach for this tournament. I do not play, but I do recruit. So let me know if you'd like to participate. Um, and I'm looking forward to that and just, you know, again, fellowshiping with the community for a really, really good cause. I think that's it for me. City manager.
Um, I don't have anything specific this week, other than, um, just, I hope council, uh, enjoys the conference. And they are able to get a lot of information that will drive the city forward.
Thank you. All right. This is our second opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address council, please raise your hand. You'll have three minutes. All right, anybody online on Zoom?
Anybody on Zoom wants to speak? Please press the raise hand button now.
All right. Thank you. All right, seeing none. So different than many of our previous meetings, we actually are going to go into closed session as a body. Meaning that the audience have to bid you all adieu shortly. So have a great evening. Um, and then I will ask that council, um, someone makes a motion citing the MCL code on our agenda. So that we can move into closed session. Have a great evening, everyone who was joining us. Thank you so much. See you at MML? Are you MML? No? Okay, all right. Yeah, see you later. Bye, everybody. And then if somebody could make the motion.
I'll move, um, I move that in, uh. Compliance with MCL one five point two six eight D to consider the purchase. That we moved to a closed session to consider the purchase of property.
It's been moved and supported. Roll call vote. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Jay Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Seven yeses, the motion.
So we're just gonna wait for.
We also have to get the.
Said the recording and, and have a good night, everyone who's watching.
And now I understand what's going.